Okay, we're gonna start the Town of Sangerville Select Board Meeting. It's Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the Select Board Minutes, Meeting Minutes 1116, 2022.
Make the motion to approve that.
Second. All in favor, we're all three in favor. Item 3, Review of Treasurer's Warrants, payroll 96, 98, 101, accounts payable 97, 99, and 100.
Make a motion to approve any of these ready.
Second.
Any discussion? No, we all voted in favor. Open session? Jerry, would you like to speak? Jerry Peters is here today.
I'm the only one here, so. There is way more than several people of that interest than knowing whatever it costs to make the necessary changes to the town hall so it can be suitable for the town meetings. And we'd like to obtain some real life quotes on the things that would need to be done.
Well, we, uh, we know for sure because we got numbers from Carpenter and Associates out of Old Town. Wasn't that what, who they were?
Yeah.
Cause I, I, we got numbers from them in 19, then I called them for an update. This was just to address the foundation and I think the shearing of the timbers in the first floor.
Yeah, that was in 20, right?
That was in 20, anyway, his number was at a million for that. Now, we hadn't addressed anything else. And we've just kind of, we've just kind of looked at the Central Hall project. We knew what that cost because, because that's all been publicized. So over 14 years, they spent two and a half million dollars. So we were, we were just thinking without spending more money, because we actually had to spend some money for Carpenter to give us that first estimate. I think realistically, you're probably looking at four or five million dollars to try to get it to where Central Hall is, based on what they did. But we don't know that for sure. I can't see that it's, I guess we, we don't see how it's gonna be less than theirs.
I don't know, I mean, concrete right now is, concrete right now compared to last spring is ungodly. There's not much has gone up, no.
But I was interested, you've, uh, there's been a little bit of discussion, frankly, it's a historical society. Keeps kind of bringing this topic up in an indirect way, they don't actually ever come to us. But they make some posts on social media and that sort of thing. I, I went so far as to comment and invite anybody who had an interest in this to call their selectmen. I gave them the phone numbers. Today, I've never had an inquiry from anybody. Have either one of you?
No.
No.
Nobody's ever called me about it.
Not even one?
Wow.
So I'm in.
Honestly, this is the first time that I know that anybody has actually came to a meeting or even asked for amount, what are the cost rates at all.
And when we had the insurance, which is what drove us out of the building.
Well, yeah, the insurance basically pulled the liability.
Right.
So we were done. That was what ended it for us.
They did a comprehensive, Dale was there when they did a comprehensive review of the entire building. And so again, not knowing exactly all, everything they did to Central Hall. But I mean, there were issues with this, you know, starting at the slate roof all the way down. Uh, cause they used drums or a drum to examine the building.
And then he went up in, he physically went up, he goes, well, he actually said, I'm not really supposed to do this, but I'm curious and I want to know. And he went up into the, up into the attic area.
Above the?
Yeah, above the stage.
The stage.
Yeah, yeah, he went up, there's a ladder.
And there's a bunch of slates, shingles sitting on the east.
He said there was a couple ton of shingles sitting up in there that nobody ever took down. And one thing that, I mean, cause I personally haven't been up there a lot in the last two or three years. But when I was up there that day, if you stood on the stage and you look out across, you can actually see the balconies are tipping.
Yeah, he noted that in his report. They're sagging.
They're not even upright anymore. So the thought that the foundation is the, it's, it's top to bottom, it isn't. It's the whole thing.
Oh, I, I know. I've done all of it.
So that's why, I mean, we, we're not trying to steer this in any way. But I know I've had quite a few concerned taxpayers that don't want to invest that kind of money in that large of a building because as a town to run the town office, we don't need it. And if you fix it all up, there's not really use for the building afterwards either.
Well, that was the other thing I was gonna, before the insurance company basically said you can't use it. It was available. Uh, it was, it was messy and they were, you know, the ceiling could, but in the 10, nearly 10 years that we've been doing this, no one's ever come in and said, could we use the building for something?
Right.
Never said, could, is that venue available or nothing?
Right.
So we've demonstrated now, we literally don't need more than six or seven hundred square feet for a town office because we're doing just fine with what we have. You know, why would we have 11,000 square feet? So it may be a viable building, but it doesn't necessarily connect it to running the town office. We don't, we've got two ladies working very well at that old post office.
And it's, I don't think it's viable for the town. I mean, it's, it's too much of an expense to burden citizens for. We're really, we're doing it for more of an emotional attachment than a need attachment. Whereas that's why we mentioned it, the Historical Society, a nonprofit group. Or we say that, but any nonprofit, we could work with to tape onto that project in that building and reach out for funding or whatever and do something. But I just, I don't see it should be based on dependent upon the taxpayers.
Well, I mean, if, if they wanted to spend the money, they could, but there hasn't been any interest.
I, I do know that younger taxpayers that I've spoken to, and I, and I think you both have also spoken to young people, families living in Sangerville have said they don't want to be strapped with that tax bill. And in light of this whole thing with the, with the tax freeze or whatever that, that.
Stabilization.
What, what's a?
Stabilization.
Stabilization, are you aware of that? There's a, there's a bill that anyone over, is it 55?
65.
65.
If they apply by December 1st.
Can apply by December 1st to stabilize their taxes so they don't go up every year. So, um, so for example, my taxes will be, will stay exactly what they were last year. No matter what happens to our taxes in the town of Sangerville this year. Therefore, the younger taxpayers are really gonna be on the brunt of, you know, if this is a, this is a bill that's gonna have to be passed every single year or, or is going to have to be approved or approved every year. And the state is going to pay the balance, the, the difference of, of what my tax bill was last year and what I'm going to be assessed if our taxes, if our mill rate goes up because we're fixing the town hall or whatever it may be. So I think that even more so demonstrates that our young taxpayers and very few and far between in Sangerville, but really don't want to get strapped with, with.
Shouldn't have to burden the town.
Exactly, exactly. And, and you know, I, I know that their values are different. I, you know, as far as, I mean, there are many older people obviously that have memories of that building.
Well, and I, I think this, I would, in 19, I dove into this a little bit at the town meeting, but there's a, there's kind of a critical mass in terms of the size of your community, the number of taxpayers and what a mill is. So a mill in Sangerville is like 75, 80,000 dollars. But, but in Dover-Foscroft, it could be 30,000. So all of a sudden now, the burden of a $5 million project in Dover-Foscroft or Hamden or Bangor, if you did a $5 million renovation to a historical building in Bangor, it might not even be a mill to the taxpayers, there's just so many taxpayers. We don't have very many taxpayers. So that same project that in Bangor might be, for a $100,000 home, might be $10 or $15. For you, I, it might be $3,500. So it's, we just don't have enough critical mass to tackle four, five, six million dollar projects. It's just not, so I think Dover is like 4 to 1.
Personally, it'd be totally different if there was a use for the building.
Right, and I.
Or, or an end use for the building for the town. And that's where there isn't, that's where we lose, you know what I mean?
Right, and Dover-Foscroft has borne that out as far as Central Hall, they're, they're still.
They don't really, the town doesn't want to take it back.
No.
It still needs work, they're having trouble really utilizing it, but they are using it and I see.
Yeah, but even that though, I mean, that was just an article, not that long ago.
Yes, it was.
So my understanding is the town is basically leasing it to that organization.
Correct.
They control everything as far as if they can make any money in or out, but the town's still paying for the heat, the electricity and everything.
Yeah.
That building for the town as a use is still backwards. I mean, they're still shelling money out every month.
Yeah.
To eat it, for a light bill.
Right, it sort of hasn't launched, it's not supporting itself.
Right, but it's still not really, that's where I struggle because it's not a town use building. It's, it's used for a public events or, you know what I mean, for certain things, but.
Yeah, it's really a commercial entity.
It is, it's more of a commercial thing.
Some town subsidy. But if any, we went, we went to the Historical Society only because they're the only nonprofit that we knew of and they had shown some interest in the building, but it could be any nonprofit. If any group of people got together and said, we want to do what the Friends of Central Hall did, this Select Board would probably support you and take it to the town. Cause they did all of that without town money. That was, it was a long project, but.
You can take that one step further. I don't know who's talking to you or who's, or whatever, it doesn't matter. But that group of individuals, they could create their own nonprofit organization to save this Sangerville, bloody, bloody, bloody.
Right, right.
And take, and do the same thing.
Yeah.
So I mean, but the problem is, it seems to be, there's a few people, I don't, I don't even think there's that many as far as the whole of the town, but there's a few people that do have an interest in the building, but they have an interest in wanting it fixed, but they don't have the interest to want to be that dedicated like they were in Central Hall.
Correct.
That's exactly right.
That group came in and we talked to them, I mean, that was, that was a lot of work.
Well, that actually, we talked to them because we were invited to a Historical Society meeting and the gentleman who, Chris.
Mar.
Mar, Mar.
Moss, Moss, yeah.
He, he was their guest.
Presentation.
And he basically shared with them their strategy, their approach on how they, they saved that building. It was really an interesting meeting.
Right.
But there was, there was no, there was nobody amongst the Historical Society people who were inspired enough to say, we want to do what Chris did. So that's kind of where it's been.
Yeah, and we've had several conversations with them when we can. And they keep saying, we can't even, we can't even support our own little building across the river here.
Yeah, they have said that.
Right. So, but in the meantime, we need to march forward, we, you know, as a board, we, we need to continue to, to, one, take care of the building, but we also.
We gotta run the town.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
I mean, fortunately for us, what we're paying in rent is probably less than we would have paid in heat. So we didn't, we actually probably saved money by moving it out. So money wise, it hasn't been an impact.
But has.
A good one, yeah.
Yeah, a good one, that's right, that's right. So.
But we're working on a proposal, I, I, I think the three of us believe that long term, a municipality probably shouldn't rent its, its town office forever. And so we're working on a proposal of alternatives where we would, we'd either build in that location or another location or buy it. So ultimately, we would own our town office and it would be the size that we would need to run the town. It wouldn't be 10 times that size. But we haven't gotten there yet.
Would that include space enough to do our town meeting?
Well, that's a really good question, uh, because I, I think where, the way I imagine it is we do a proposal with that much space and without it. And then the people, okay, it might cost us an extra 200,000, but it would be worth it. And other people might say, well, no, I, I, but yeah, I think we would look at it that way.
But the scary part of that is, is the reality of the room we're in right now, if you, if this was a room and not full of things, this is almost enough room to run the town.
Yeah.
And then, but once you add enough for your town meeting, you just added on the entire rest of this fire station. So I mean, try to compare expense wise, that's really what you're looking.
Yeah, I, I.
It's gotta get huge in a hurry.
You'd probably go from 700 square feet to close to 3,000 square feet.
Yeah.
With, on something you're gonna use once or twice a year. I think a lot of people don't, I, I believe, and we're gonna have, ask Lorna to look in this, but because we're part of the SAD, I believe that we have access to the school buildings in Guilford. And we'd have to coordinate, we'd have to, probably have to pay some janitorial services, but we already own those. So if we, if we were in a position where Grace Bible didn't work for us or they closed, like churches have closed, then we would, we could always go that route. So.
Yeah, I, I heard complaints about voting now and the town meeting that we have.
We haven't, I didn't get one.
Yeah, that's the problem. We, we get no, we get no feedback.
Yeah, no, and when I went to voting, it went beautiful.
Yeah.
It seemed smooth.
I, I weren't opposed, but there, there are more than several people that are opposed.
They're very quiet. I mean, they haven't spoken to any of us.
Right, and we, we can't implement any change or, and/or talk to, you know, if people don't come to us.
And we had a larger turnout for this voting.
That's true.
And we had more positive feedback.
Right.
With a larger turnout this year.
Yeah, and I did have one person, the first time we went to Grace Bible, and it was around the pandemic. So that was kind of, and, but I pointed out to that person, I, our attendance was as good as it ever has been. So maybe one person didn't like that location, but for the most part, the town was fine.
And all of that gets vetted through the state. I mean, you know, it's not like we just willy nilly decided that's the best place to have it. I mean, Lorna had an exhaustive application process to have it approved by the state.
And they so far, they haven't, they don't build us, have they? They don't charge us anything.
Yes, it's pretty hard to, it's pretty hard in your brain to reckon, you know, do you want to build a 3,000 foot building? That's just all a huge expense that you have, still have to heat it and you're only gonna use it once or twice a year? Or you have a very nice facility already that's usable for us to, for town to use and no extra cost.
Right. And when we got the opinion from the state, they said, you know, church basements, church community rooms, that's a very typical venue for voting.
Yeah, I weren't opposed, but, but I heard grumbling, but.
But I can tell you, I, I'm, I think it's pretty well everybody will agree, it doesn't matter what we do.
So it's some grumbling?
It doesn't matter what the conversation's gonna be, you're always gonna have people grumble. So for us, I look at, you know, 90% is awesome, but if we can hit 75, 80%, I think we're doing our job. And I feel like anytime we've used that, I, it's in the 95, 98%. Cause I'm not hearing a complaint, I mean, so.
Yep, and it's, there's no stairs, you know, it's safe, good parking.
It's clean, it's plenty of room.
Warm.
Rhodes, the only thing I ever get a call on, you know, something's washed out, cover it's this, cover it's that. But I've never had a call on the venue that we use for voting or town meeting and I've never had a call on that old building.
Yeah, um, I, I thought that the projected cost, count the associates who follow it was over the top. I didn't view it as doing the whole thing like Central Hall did. I, I was, when I, when I thought about that, I, I thought, and several others thought that just so that it was safe and usable for what we presently use it for.
So Carpenter's, Carpenter's numbers is first floor down. Carpenter's numbers isn't all the way to the roof. So that's what we're saying is we already have these numbers and this only covers here. And now through the insurance and what we've learned, it's, it's top to bottom.
Well, and not only that, we're not using it. We literally don't, we, the library closed, again, that had nothing to do with us because I've heard rumors that some people think we had something to do with it. Our library's closed, uh, we don't have our town office in there anymore. We, and it doesn't need to be there. We're saving thousands and thousands of dollars just in heat. And the building is in great disrepair. So yeah, if somebody wants to tackle it, we're open minded, but there's no need for it.
We're not gonna move our office back in there, even if somebody.
I don't know why you would.
Right, exactly.
If that was fixed tomorrow, why would we put the town office back in that building?
And, right, and heat that space and, right.
And put that tax burden on the town. Doesn't make sense. It really doesn't.
But you're not gonna get insurance on that for a few thousand dollars in repairs, that's not gonna happen. But that doesn't mean a private company couldn't come in, we, there was somebody poking around supposedly with a real estate interest, like a residential interest.
And he's still interested.
He's still interested.
Multi-residential interest, not, not single family.
Yeah, I guess.
Be a big family.
Yeah.
The Addams Family.
Yeah. But yeah, with some interest, but, but we are trying to put something together for our town meeting because we're trying to move ahead and, and without input from people like you or whatever, people sitting here and asking us questions, we have to keep, try to move forward.
And really, to me, if there's, if there's nobody out there that wants to form a group to, to jump on this project, I personally, I like the idea of something else for a use that's still a part of the community, it's still gonna have a use and somebody else serves a purpose.
Housing, whatever.
That's needed in our area.
Right, right, right.
To me, that, it's way, that building's way more valuable as something like that than it would ever be if you fixed that all up with just big open spaces.
But one thing I would really, when you're talking to the people who are interested in this stuff, because there's been a little bit of misunderstanding out there, there isn't anything that we can do to that building without taking it to the town. We couldn't sell it to a developer, we couldn't tear it down, we, we can't fix it. So nothing is gonna happen.
Right.
Because the three of us decide to do it.
No, no, but I, I realize, but I can't really, it's a, it's a, it's a.
But yeah, I mean, I don't know if you knew, but we actually had somebody tour for salvage rights. Is there salvage rights? Remember how they used to take buildings down and resell the material and there's no value there even for that.
There's no interest. I had, it's two I talked to, one actually drove up from Castine and went through the building and all he wanted was the front door.
Yeah, it was the door. Yeah, he said nothing else was special.
Yeah, he's all cool, it's kind of neat, but it wasn't really.
Collectible or.
He said even the glass, the glass is nothing, it's, there's a lot of it, but it's just not that special, the glass. Kind of, I wouldn't know, but I mean.
That's one thing that wasn't on the list of if the glass dangerous in a building. The house checks in time for a few years. It's heavy, plate glass and the glaze has gone out of the most.
Yeah, fallen out.
Yeah.
Did you know that there's like an entire roof worth of slate in the attic?
No, I've been up there too, I just didn't notice.
Yeah, that's a lot of weight.
Yeah.
Sitting up there.
I don't know why they did that, but.
Well, they got it up there to probably do the roof and then didn't need it and then why would you haul it back down?
The thing I can wonder is the flat on the top, was that always flat like that? Was it, it was. So that's what, that's almost what the guy was saying, well, maybe they did something and, you know what I mean? That slate that they took off, but they never took it all the way down.
Oh.
I mean, I can't imagine they would have taken all the slate off the rest of the building instead of letting gravity take care of it on its own, but would pile that in the rafters, that doesn't really, I don't know. It's up there.
And I have gotten a lot of positive feedback on the job that they did with the new office. Everybody that I've talked to likes, it feels homey and neat and.
Organized and.
It's good stuff.
Yeah, definitely, I had plates.
And again, it proves how little space we need to run the town.
Yeah. I was pretty, if you go to Corinth or Newport or, I mean, they all just have a little.
And Monson, all of them, tiny, tiny little space.
This is really the only clunky thing we have right at the moment.
The fire station.
No, I mean, the, it's our meeting area. Yes. But I mean, we don't have a, we don't have our community room in the building.
Right.
And we don't have enough room downtown to have our meetings. Well, we could, we probably could move some stuff around and do it.
Yeah, but this was.
This is so much easier, it's here, you can, it's town owned, why not use it?
Teed it.
Yeah.
So, just one more question, if, if a group of people wanted to obtain the pose to put it in repair, how could we get in?
That's a good question, we'd have to check and see how much access we're allowed to even.
I don't think citizens can go in.
No, I think we'd almost have to do a handover. I'm, I'm just speculating, shooting my head, but.
I mean, we could solicit, I mean, we could solicit a contractor to come in to do a soup to nuts quote for us, but you're not gonna get a contract to do that for nothing.
No, and I ran, all due respect, I ran into the la, back in 19, when we got those numbers from Carpenter, there were a whole, a number of people who are like, well, they don't know what they're talking about. And so you can, you can engineer yourself to death because every time you bring in an engineer, the local experts tell you, oh, he doesn't know what he's talking about. And so you just start over again, you know? And we, we ran into this with Rhodes too, but.
Well, and honestly, what we found out about the building, that's really part of the reason why we are where we are. I mean, when we did the work, what we did on the foundation, we, as a town, I don't know who was involved or who was in charge, it doesn't really matter at this point, but whoever was in charge at the time didn't follow through with the engineering firm. They didn't follow the recommendations that was provided to fix the foundation the way it's supposed to be fixed. So between that being done, the renovations that were in the building, so it moved the support structures on the first floor, all of that stuff, it was all done against recommendation. So we spent all that money to fix it, nobody wanted to follow the engineer's recommendation of what you should be doing. So all of that money we spent was useless.
It was over half a million dollars.
That's my other bigger fear that if we do this, just like what he said, you're gonna get all these quotes, people are gonna shoot them all down. If the town, as a town, if we move the project forward, if you don't follow everything 100% to the T, you're gonna be right back in the same spot, only now you spent $5 million. So I just see it as a giant snowball. We've already spent way too much money on that building and we are in worse shape for the day we spent any.
I mean, we did get some use out of it, but it was very expensive if you look at the last $500,000. We could have built a brand new little building that we actually need and we'd be in great shape for another 200 years.
Further ahead.
Yeah. So I mean, to answer your question, I, my, my suspicion is if, if we're gonna hand, we would want to hand it over. If an entity like the Friends of said, approached the town and said, we would like permission to take over that building and here's our goal, and it may take us forever, but we want to do that. That's a, that's a proposition that I think we would entertain.
I would be very willing to put that as an article on the town warrant.
Right.
And then the town's gonna either vote, yes, you guys could do it, or no, you can't.
Right.
But it won't involve town funds. It'll involve raising the money the way they did in Dover. If they love the building, they'll work their butts off to save it.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll find a use for it too.
I'm not sure what's up.
I don't either, because no one's ever asked to use it, so.
But again, time is ticking, so if, you know, if that's what they want to do, we need to, because.
One of the proposals we're imagining is demolition and building a brand new modern building on that spot. I like the location, it's central, people use, so maybe, maybe that's the step forward. Now people might say, no, we don't want to do that, okay, well, maybe we'll build it somewhere else.
Then we rent, I mean, we rent till the next time we bring us something up.
Yep. But.
We'll come up with another proposal, if it gets turned down, we keep going forward.
Yep. Yep, exactly right.
So the building is covered by liability insurance?
Not for any use. If somebody walks by it and a piece of ice hits them, right now we're covered.
They, they put that back on it as long as we don't use it. If we stay in it, we lost it.
And employees can go in. Lorna can go in.
Laura can go in.
We could go in.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I would have to, before I'd wanna even do any more with it, I'd wanna see a lot more interest. I would have to, before I'd wanna even do any more with it, I'd wanna see a lot more interest, huh?
That's kinda where, that's exactly where we're at.
So, do we wanna talk a little bit while he's here?
About?
Ordinances?
Yep, go right in, if you don't mind.
So a couple things after, since you got, you and Lance came about that ordinance. The bigger concern that I guess we have is, we already have ordinances right now, we can't get any, we're not enforcing them. Um, for whatever reason, I mean, we moved the debris ordinance or however you want to verb, it don't even have the actual.
Property.
Property maintenance.
Maintenance ordinance.
That's one in particular. Um, we changed that at last meeting, it's an enforceable ordinance, it's proven, we're not enforcing it. So, what is the, what is the sense to create more ordinances if we can't enforce what we have?
True.
So I.
Particularly the mooring one, that one, I kept thinking about that, we don't have watercraft, we don't. We're gonna send somebody out and how long have you been moored here, are you, is this commercial? What we're gonna, my fear would be, we're gonna end up with another ordinance that we don't actually enforce.
Right.
Uh.
Now, we can figure out how we can enforce, that's different.
Or that we even need, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're not doing what we got, so.
Yeah, and we get complaints all the time, so.
It reminds me of the whole ATV thing, I remember when we were doing some roads and not other roads and we, that's when we were getting calls. We, and we decided, you know what, it's all or nothing, we're either gonna, everything's gonna be open to ATVs or it's no ATVs, and we took it to the town. And the town said, open, but it.
But now we don't have to enforce anything.
Yeah, cause it's.
Now it's an actual police weapon, I mean, it's all.
That's right, that's right.
And this solar panel thing, I, it's, we've only seen the tip of the iceberg. I have a friend, I have, actually, he's my cousin, he owns, uh, property in Paton, he owns a grocery store. Uh, a Taiwanese delegation was there this week, they're going to put in hundreds of acres up there. This thing is going global.
Yeah, yeah.
Huh, wow.
But the only thing about, the other thing about your mooring ordinance you brought up, one thing that I didn't think about, and I don't know per se if we want an ordinance or how we could handle this. The one thing that we've had an issue, this now makes two years in a row on Center Pond. Um, we don't have anything for anybody to, and I'm not saying I wanna come up with a cost or anything like that. We don't have anything that, anybody put a dock in anywhere or any way they want to. There's nothing stopping or, and there's nothing, as a camp owner, you need to notify the town, or there's no permit process or anything for that.
No size limitation, nothing, nothing.
So, which is, that's great, I'm okay with all of that, but the problem we have is last year, we had somebody actually haul an old wooden dock and they. Once landed that over at the boat ramp, last year or year before, can't remember, um, and expected the town to dispose of that.
Oh, you mean after the end of the summer, at the summer?
Nobody knew whose it was, it just showed up, the blink had turned into the town to haul that. So, and now this year, and I don't know, I haven't checked to see if that floating one has gotten cleaned up, but. This year, we have another camp owner that had a floating dock that was wooden, um, that hasn't taken care of it yet and it's floated away from theirs and. Down in front of other camp owners, um, so that really, the debris from that kinda thing is, is more of another. I don't know the answer, I don't know, I just, that's definitely something that's kinda coming up legally.
I doubt that's legal, I don't think you can abandon debris.
I don't think you can either, but where's your.
Again, how do we enforce it?
Correct, but you don't need another ordinance.
No, 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 that's not, no, that's not what I'm saying, by any means, I'm just.
Right, it's just.
Yeah, it's just people doing things that they aren't supposed to do.
Yes, and this is really another bigger problem, and I don't know if you guys have ever had that issue over on.
Not with docks or anything like that, no.
I've seen a few on Wausau Cake and usually what happens is citizens go out and gather junk up.
Yes.
They tow it over to the public landing and the town comes and gets it.
Yeah, we had an ice house once that sort of washed up, I'm sure, that got left. And we had to hold that up.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, that is the biggest thing, is the enforcement. If we have an ordinance.
The one that Dale mentioned is, is a, a top one, George struggled with it, Lance is struggling with it.
With the property maintenance.
Yes, yeah.
Well, George never had fining. George couldn't, George didn't have any teeth, it wasn't his fault, the ordinance.
Didn't have that.
You just basically show up and talk to people, but you couldn't make them do anything.
Right.
We changed that ordinance, not us personally, the town did. Now you can, you can fine them into oblivion, but we're not doing that.
Yeah.
So, we're not using the, we're still not, we're not enforcing it. I mean, that's, that's how you can enforce these ordinances, is with the fining mechanism. And for whatever reason, we're not, we're not going down that road.
I think Lance has tried to, tried to work with people, trying to get them to do what they're supposed to do. But it ultimately, if he has to get a title somebody that comes before this board.
No one does it.
No, don't, it's him.
Yes, he just, there's this.
Ultimately, he could.
Yeah, he can.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, now, he, before he spends money, he might come to us and say, okay, I'm getting ready to go to court, and Lorna's gonna say, yeah, we got it in the budget or we don't. But we don't, we don't have any role in this.
No, it's him, that's his role.
And it's all spelled out.
Yeah.
In the ordinance.
Right, but I mean, in his rules of being a.
It's no different than Sean Landzoning, if he finds someone who's violated, you know, they built something within ten feet of the water. He doesn't come to us and say, what do you want me to do about it?
No.
This, this ordinance is the same way.
Same thing.
Same.
Yeah.
He, he, in fact, he should be proactive, or any code enforcement should be proactive. If he sees a place that's in violation of ordinance, pull in and talk to him.
So, so you're saying that the, the people, citizens don't need to report to him for him to act?
Correct, our ordinance stands on its own.
Right.
Just like Sean Landzoning does.
He can drive around and say, ah, I'm not.
Oh, I, I looks like place here is, yeah, this is not acceptable.
Yeah, you're starting to get into a, we're gonna have a situation, you nip it before it gets anywhere.
Sees, yeah, things starting to collect. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was.
But Sam's finding, I mean, it's all right there, it's in the rules, you can do it.
And that's an area where I do get comments. I do get comments from people saying, why isn't X, Y, Z getting, I thought we, and I'm like, I don't really know why.
I, I, I've talked to him about, but I, I think he's been. That's a particular ordinance we have difficulty with. And the watercraft one could be another difficult to enforce.
But there again, if, for whatever reason, if the ordinance is there, the rules are there, it's all there to enforce it. If Lance, for whatever reason, and he's not here, so I don't wanna get into this, cause I don't wanna speak badly, that's by any means.
No, it's generic, it's just the old enforcement.
If there's an issue with our ordinance or the mechanism of enforcement, or he feels that, I wish he would come to us so that. Together we can figure it out, do we need to modify, which I don't believe we need to, um, the ordinance so we can enforce it.
Yeah.
But as it is right now, it's, it stands on its own, so. And until he comes to us and says differently, we don't know differently.
Right, and we can't put it in front of the town and change it.
We could.
Right, we can, right, if we don't.
But we've said, but we've already said it to the attorney and the attorney's already told us it's enforceable the way it is.
Right.
Yeah.
You have the fining mechanism, you have everything you need to enforce this ordinance.
Yeah.
So, if he feels differently or if he sees something differently, I wish, let him know, I wish he'd come talk to us.
Yeah, I know it's been years in the south to grow a soapstone, obviously, it's not gonna work.
Nope.
Well, it didn't work for George.
And, and, and the ones that he's worked with, there's still a lot more of it out there. We're gonna have, they can do it, and that kinda thing.
Yep.
And I think that's why.
I think we are, I mean, my own opinion, I think we need to go the other way, we almost need to be the hard ask. Um, and set examples and get these few that we have cleaned up because I really, as I drive around, it seems like a lot of the newer residents. There's a few of the newer residents that are moving in, I don't know if they're seeing these other places and thinking that's the norm and it's okay.
Yeah.
But some of these ones that are coming in are starting to create as much of an issue as what we already have.
Hmm.
So I, our problem is really getting worse, not getting better. Or we have more of the same, I guess, is.
We don't want that.
And it's unfair to other people.
No, no, the neighbors, no.
Well, and it's all, it's one thing to not have an ordinance, if I get the call and someone says, you know, why aren't you, well, we don't have an ordinance.
Right.
But we do have an ordinance, and so now, the fault is really ours.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if we get petition tomorrow and majority, and people come in and say, we don't want this ordinance, this is how we want everybody to be able to live.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And we go to the town and the town says, okay, no, no more ordinance, alright, great.
And it's easy.
That's easy, but that's not what's happening, I mean, the townspeople have spoken, they want this stuff taken care of, so.
Okay, but the, the, the watercraft ordinance will, will do to talk about it next week, but we'll, we'll just.
I think you're okay to talk about it, but I think you got a bigger conversation to have about enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really not practical to think that we could enforce that. Now, if you guys come up with a.
A way.
A strategy that makes sense, we're open-minded, but.
And a way to, and a plan to show that we can enforce what we have.
Right, right.
The other side of it.
I mean, particularly, a, a body of water that's in two townships, I mean, I don't even know.
Yeah.
That gets complicated.
Yeah, cause I, water doesn't follow the lines, once you're in the water, you're in two townships.
Right.
Yep.
I'll leave you.
Alright, Jerry. But anytime you have a question on any of this stuff, feel free, I mean, I, I know Dale's right across the street, so you can talk anytime you want to.
Okay, goodnight.
Well, that brings us to, uh, item five of town office, and it looks like the safe has been fixed.
It is all fixed, it was actually the mechanism inside.
Good. We also know that it isn't fireproof.
It is not fireproof.
Just a steel plate.
I've heard that before.
Yeah, when you can drill through it, it's not fireproof.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
Um, I'm, I'm glad he brought it up, though, I mean, we do, we've covered a lot of ground that we don't have to cover here again.
Yep.
But I do feel like, uh. I would like us to have a proposal ready for town meeting.
That's what I would like to, I was gonna start talking about that, uh, you know, maybe preparing, get some quotes on demolition.
The whole package.
Getting some quotes on, you know, what's the value of the property as it is.
Yep.
Uh, what was the name of the young man who did the, uh, the images for us, the?
Last name Wade. Yes, I can't remember his first name, but I have it at the.
If you need to work with, if, even if, you're gonna have to spend some money to get good quotes, but I, I, it's time to put together a package, step by step.
We need to have it for town meeting.
Honestly, I, if I was you, with everything that you got to deal with, I wouldn't reach out to a bunch of folks. I would call two or three general contractors and say, have them come right in and see you guys, see your layout. This is how much, this is what room works, but we need more room for this, we need more room for that. Have that conversation with them, and then, here you go.
But I, I think if you try to be the general, it's gonna be almost impossible.
Correct.
To get ready. If you, if you work with an architectural general, they should be able to put together numbers for us.
Yeah.
For you, which you could present to us.
I think his name was Nick Wade, wasn't it? I, I've got it in the, in the office.
But I, I, now that we're renting, I think it's time to get very serious about what the options are and what they're gonna cost.
Correct.
That would, I'd love to, I, we should be able to present that by next town meeting.
Yes, and that's.
And I think the only other, if you're gonna do that, reach out to, I'm assuming MMA, and ask them, what may, as far as. Cause this is where that guy was even kinda sketchy, Woody, what we were hearing was different things before. But if we build a building for two or three employees for general public use. I'm sure that's not the same fire code, same accessibility as it's gonna be as if we built, have to build a building.
Commercial, just commercial standards.
A hundred and, I mean.
Fifty people.
Yeah, what's the number we want, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five-ish, a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, I, yeah, probably, probably not two hundred, but more than a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, so if we build a building with that capacity, what does that mean? Because I, I'm pretty sure when you, even if we say.
You're talking about sprinklers and everything like that.
Could be, could be.
Well, in order to that, you're talking restrooms.
Yeah, right.
I mean. Yep, public, yeah.
Everything just went.
Yeah, that's where, you know, the idea of using existing infrastructure, whether it's the school, or the, or the Grace Bible.
That's where it works.
I personally, I'm not opposed to the school idea, my biggest, and I can, where I'm more in favor of using Grace Bible. Community room is it's local, it's in town.
Yeah.
I know the school's only a mile away, but I can just, if we did that, I could hear so, why are you doing this when this place is available right exactly? I mean, that's really, I can hear that complaint coming.
But I have no problem in letting, in bringing it up and letting people decide.
Yeah.
I think i- if we're gonna propose a new building, building with meeting space, without meeting space, meeting space at the school. Uh, the local, vet that, find out what it will cost us, or all that, and, and what we're doing now. If, they can pick, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
So.
I just would rather have, I just wanna make sure to have one building and I could, my only thing is, it seems like. They are very, our timings, dates, nothing ever seems to matter, but I bet when it comes to the school, you got sports, you got other things going on. So it's gonna be harder to say.
Oh, definitely.
You know, as far as voting and, we needed an emergency, oh, no, can't, and there's gonna be a lot of clunkiness.
Well, does Guilford vote in at the school?
No, I.
Where do they vote?
They used, I don't know where they vote now, honestly.
Cause if they vote at the school, you wonder how that would.
I know they have their town meeting at the school.
They do.
Yeah. Yep, they had it at the middle school.
But I wonder if two towns can vote in the same venue, probably, right? I don't know, I don't know, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another question, yeah, yeah.
Jerry said he's had complete, a few people complained about voting at Grace Bible. I bet we'd have more people complain about driving to another town to vote.
That's right.
I'm, I'm just a bet.
No, I, I'm with you, that's why.
You might have a few, but.
I've known right along that we could use the school, but that's why I never, I never.
It's not as convenient.
It's not.
No.
For no one.
Right, it's really, that's the town center there.
That's right.
Of the center of our village.
And in order to that, you walk through the door, you're in the event, you go up there, you gotta walk in, you're around the corner, and. Your parking is off, you're parking down the hole.
Well, plus the other thing is, I, you know, I've never been to that high school, so I have not a clue where I would even go, you know what I'm saying?
Typically, they use, they don't use for events for, like Guilford, they don't use the high school, you use the other one.
I didn't even know there's another one, so it's, I'd like.
Well, there's the middle school and the high school.
But I'm just, but, like, when you go to Grace Bible though, you park on the same level, you walk on the same level.
Flat.
Over there, it's like this, you park down here, you walk.
Oh, okay, so it's not as handicap friendly.
Right, you have to, and handicap does play into ADA compliance.
I mean, it is, it's accessible, but it's not as convenient.
And unfortunately, most people think that by voting or going into that church, for some reason with town business, there's a church and state issue. And there's none, and I've had people say that to me.
Well, they don't understand what that means.
I know it, I know that.
But they don't understand that the church is on this side.
That's like people who think the water is lower when you take the board out.
What?
The church is on one side, we're not in the church, we're in the community. But I mean, but a lot of people can't get through that, the building is connected.
Not a lot.
And they can't.
Evidently, a few people.
A few people, yes, sorry.
I know, but, so.
But the, my overwhelming feedback has been positive.
Very, very.
So.
Yes, one too.
Except all the little dog peas on you, that's not good.
And the turnout has been, uh, also would support us, so. Um, okay, so that's.
Yes.
That's a big project.
Yeah, I will start with, yeah. We got a lot of big projects, yeah.
Okay, anything else on the town hall?
Well, just one thing, going back to Jerry, it sounds like it, there are local people who say, well, you know, we could fix it up. And put the, and that's just not an option, I mean, that's just not, I mean, that's what it sounds like. And put the, and that's just not an option, I mean, that's just not, I mean, that's what it sounds like. You know, can we get in there and.
Well, that's kinda why, and I've been just speaking for myself, because you, this is real time, we haven't talked about this, but. I think the only way I personally would promote it would be a, a handover.
Right.
Like a friend's of, if, if he has a group that's reached critical mass and says, we wanna tackle this project. And, and we, we believe in their enthusiasm. I would personally vote to take it to the town and let the town decide if they wanted to do that. But it would be handing it over to them for that purpose.
That's right.
If he, if they can put that together, God bless them.
Yeah, hundred percent. I would love to either like that, see that happen, I mean, or.
Well, and that's really. It's, it's, unfortunately, it didn't get characterized this way, but that's why we reached out to the historical society, I'm not picking on them. We just thought maybe they would be a group that would do that.
Right.
It turns out they're not, but that was what we were thinking.
Right.
So, I would say that's consistent.
Okay. Just putting.
We'll see what happens.
But then again, if, if the, the people that are approaching Jerry that want that fixed, if they don't wanna create their new. They could just join the historical society and promote it that way.
That's right.
They just, they don't have the, they, my understanding is, the historical society doesn't have the membership.
Right.
That has the time and the ability to do all this.
Right.
So if those particular people.
Can join forces.
Right, if they wanted to join the historical society, they would have to create their own nonprofit.
Right.
They could still do it that way, and that would help the, maybe that would help the historical society.
Right, yeah.
Get more active members.
Exactly.
I, I, I think Jerry's last comment, pretty much, he said, I can't think of a use for it.
Right.
Well, and not only that, when we were all done, he really said, didn't really have that many people, he would need more people.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I really feel that it's a hand, handful of people in comparison to the town, so.
When we met with, uh, the historical society last summer, Diane said, and I, I agree with her, that. Sangerville doesn't have the businesses and the critical mass, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, I think she's right. I think a project like Central Hall in Sangerville would be nearly impossible, but. We, I could be wrong, but if they wanna try it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, anything else? Still check. About this one.
So, I did this last year, and I would really like to make it a stale check this year, I reissued it. They're still not cashing it, and I've been chasing it since two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, man, he's.
So I really, at this time, we really just need to.
Uh, we, there, there is a check that we've sent, two years in a row now, to, uh, to Seth Eldiken, and he just hasn't been able to get over here and. So I think it's time to pull it off the books. It was only for twenty-four dollars.
Right.
So it's not, I just. Uh, tree growth supplement notification, and a lot of map and lot numbers.
So this is just, um, it's a hundred and twenty days, letting them know they have a hundred and twenty days to be in compliance with the tree growth. And if they're not, it's an additional five hundred dollar supplement fee, generally after you send these out, they, um, they do what they need to.
What do they have to go out for?
They have to get the forest, forester involved.
You have to pay for plant.
It's every ten years with your tree growth.
Ah, so these are ones that are, come up on their tenure?
The forestry.
Oh, wow.
Why did we not ever run into this last year, a year before?
It's first time, yeah, Josh called me and he said, uh.
I've never, ever, ever, well.
Cause it's every ten years.
Yeah, but you.
But we would have had a batch every year.
Right, right.
Every year, you should have people hit their ten years.
But these are the people that haven't actually had the forest plan.
Or did they have one and now it's, it's.
So we need to sign every single one of them?
You need to sign every single one of them.
And I've never signed one in nine years.
I wanna hold.
Something's weird.
Why, yeah, can we reach out to Josh on this? Why have we never seen this before?
Alright.
Maybe there's a change in the law.
That's my opinion, I mean, but.
Well, no, we, I, if, I would expect that we'd be doing a few of these every year, cause every year, ten years for somebody, right?
Cause every, I mean, every year.
Seen this before.
Okay, I will reach out to Josh.
The question, Lana.
This is odd. And it's quite a pile of them.
Or through, how does that work?
They come get the paperwork from us, but it has nothing to do with me, that, cause they have to get the forester involved and all that goes all, right over to Hamlin's.
Yeah, mine's tree growth, and I, and if this is correct, I'll be coming up here in a couple of years.
And if you look, but it hasn't been for ten years.
Majority of it is the same people. The same people, most of them.
That's interesting.
Yeah, but wait a minute, it's every ten years, you haven't been in the town office every ten years, so how do, how do you know it's the same people?
No, I mean, no, I mean, multiple, these are like, there's one or two of.
Also, three or four landowners.
Correct.
It's not all separate land.
Correct.
But still, I will. Different parcels?
Yes. So I will still reach out to Josh and we'll table it until, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'm still, it doesn't make sense.
In that, we've never, ever seen anything like this before.
That's the part that's tipping us over a little bit, it's like, why this year and never?
I will check with Josh and.
Okay, thank you.
Did he generate these?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
He emailed them.
It could be some new thing.
Right, right.
Could be.
Do you know, uh, it, being in tree growth, do you know that every ten years you need to reapply or re?
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't remember it when it was exactly ten, but I do, you have to freshen up your plan. But usually the guy who did it does it for a nominal fee now, because he, he did all the legwork once.
Right.
But does he know, I mean, does he keep track of the ten years?
You reach out to him and.
Oh, okay, so.
And the same thing in Litchfield, but I never saw one of these things before.
Okay, okay.
You think it'd be the other way, you think that guy at the forester, he'd be reaching out to you, could you get that next?
Right, right.
The town actually would have an interest in this falling through the cracks.
Sure.
Because the, the, they could assess you the regular, the right amount, plus the fines.
Out of tree growth, right.
You gotta pay back all that you. Once it's in tree growth, it's expensive to get it out. Cause you, you, it's like a penalty.
You have to pay back.
Yep.
You do.
The longer you're in, actually, the cheaper it is, but it's, it's, but yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Audit scheduled for January thirtieth. Under town manager's report. That's it?
That is it.
Okay, uh, road commissioner?
None.
Well, we do have an issue.
Oh, yeah, um, so, um, on the Flanders Road, not the issue that we were talking about last. Um, it turns out that, and you probably know this, um, that. After, so the complaint between the Peggy Cleaves property, property and the culvert and the, the landowner. It's the, it's going up to where the road turns and takes the, the, right here. You know, where, here's a Cleaves farm.
Right.
Peggy's is up here.
Gray road goes straight ahead up above the hill.
Oh, okay, so it's. It's right here, so, so there's a, there's a, um, potato field here, and there's potato field here. This is running, instead of going into the, where there should be a ditch. It, it's all, it, it's out into the road and it's making its own ditch, and today, so somebody complained to me.
At the corner?
Yeah, well, it's, well, actually, it's exactly where the pavement turns into dirt.
Oh, so it's way out, it's not near the corner.
Well, yeah, no, no, no.
So this is, this is right, this is the same problem we had a while ago.
We had this problem last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, it was bad today.
It was bad last year.
Yeah, and the other thing that I noticed.
Didn't he, cause, wasn't he plowing stuff out of the road, I mean?
No, it was, there was a mound of.
Yeah.
Depos, debris, deposit.
Yeah, sediment.
So, but my observation, and again, you know, we have somebody like, first look at it. But this whole side of the road is so shallowy ditch, shallowly ditched.
It's causing the issue.
Yeah, I mean, it needs some aggressive ditching.
Well, it's because it's, it continues to wash down, that's, that used to be ditch.
Oh, okay.
That's the problem.
It's filled in.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're, you're plowing that field every year, and so there's nothing to hold the soil in place.
And I spoke to him again this week about that culvert, so I will call tomorrow and if he doesn't do it, I will call the other person to get it done.
Right, I don't think though that it's the culvert, it's Peggy, it's the Cleaves driveway culvert, has nothing to do with it.
It's the field.
It's the field, before, I mean, her culvert would be right here, cause her driveway comes down, so her, and it's right here that it's just pouring down.
Yeah.
And totally missing the.
Yeah, and it's miss, yeah, but also, without the ditching, and this is also completely collapsed too, so you need to, so it needs to be ditched and.
The whole way.
If we ditched it and rip wrapped it properly, we'd solve.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Could we had for us to do it this time of year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's. I don't think there's much frost in the ground.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Really?
We're home, yeah, I got dump trucks in my bill every day right now, there's that much frost in the ground.
Oh.
The water isn't standing up on my lawn, or, I mean, I, I got an inch of rain, it's all gone.
I'll still reach out, just see, you know.
I wouldn't believe it. But that's not a very big job, if he can dig, he, he could do it.
It's a fair amount of ditching up through there though.
Oh, I mean, he's gonna have to do.
It's a distance.
Yeah, that is a big distance, if he, if that.
I bet that's four.
Because this field is doing the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's quarter, half mile up through there.
Yeah, yeah. So, that was a complaint that I got today.
I'll look into it.
And I went and looked at it. Um, only because I hadn't been out there.
And I only, I went and looked at it that weekend that you texted me.
Oh, okay.
And what, by that was all.
The, I, I, I spoke with a, a resident, I said, oh, I think your wife called me, he said, well. Since I've never married, I don't think it was my wife. I was like, wow, okay, so, and, but the person that called last time, the, was the, the, this.
Right.
This guy lives right here.
Okay.
Our dam is still blocked, and I don't know, I don't know if that matters for the winter, but I'm.
I went, there was too much water going over, I went down the other day to take care of it, there was too much water going over.
You couldn't get, there's no way you could get it out.
No, you can't even get across there, there was eight inches over the top of the dam. Saturday when I was down there.
So the dam is, is functioning in a way that it really isn't designed to function, and I don't know when that's ever gonna stop, I mean. It could be like that all winter.
The next time it isn't eight inches deep.
It'll be frozen solid.
I'll take that out.
Should it sit another board in there?
And I still haven't heard who's doing it.
And somebody moved the rock that, remember the day you and I was over there, and I put the rocks back?
Yeah.
Those are moved, you can drive your truck down it.
Yeah, that's true.
And it's, it's a beaten path for vehicles driving out into the dam.